Thank you all for attending this evening. I want to thank North Star Lanes for allowing me to use the banquet hall for the meet and greet School Board Candidates event. We're going to be putting some snacks out on the table there for you to enjoy. However, it is a cash bar event, so you're on your own in that regard. Also, I want to say thank you to many, many people behind the scenes who assisted in making this event possible. This cannot be done by just one person. I'm Mike Boldig. My name's on the ad and it was in the Chopper's Guide and whatever, so I'm kind of leading up the event here and stuff. So, once again, thank you all for attending. I want to give you all a reminder. This is a chance for the community to get to know the candidates and ask questions of them. One of my favorite quotes is from Walt Whitman. "Want you to be curious, not judgmental." This is not a debate. This is an opportunity to familiarize yourselves with the candidates from the school board and see where they stand on the issues at hand. Quick introduction for the tables up here. Down the far end, we have reserved a table for Danny Pyatt. Unfortunately, Danny is not able to attend this evening. He had a prior commitment out of the area, and we thank him for letting us know. Next, down here to my left, is Jennifer Welch. In front of me, Jill Maddick Nelson. To my left, Lee Rorick, Jennifer Cresson, and Scott Peterson. We've got the tables spread out in this manner intentionally, so that way you have an opportunity when we get going here to go up and speak to the candidates individually, to ask them questions of your concern. We're not going to group them all together and throw the microphones around and have you throw questions at everybody. This is a chance for you to get to know those candidates that you want to meet, talk to, find out where they stand on the issues. So, the setup of the room is intentional. That being said, I want to kind of start the evening out here with three questions to just be conversation starters. That way, kind of set the tone for the evening. We want everybody to be cordial. We want everybody to be very understanding. These people probably are not used to talking to a large group of people at once, so that's the reason for the 101. We have provided the candidates each with a notebook and a pen, so they can write down notes. If you have questions that the candidates cannot answer, they have the opportunity to write their information down, write your contact information down, to get back to you to answer your question. So, that being said, there's microphones on Jennifer's and Jill's tables, and once you get done answering the question, if you want to make sure that it's passed around, or I can put them down and grab them and get them off to somebody else. But, here we go. First off, and we'll start and we'll keep it in the order as they appear on the ballot, once again. First question is, starting with Jennifer, if you would like to introduce yourself, tell us a bit about yourself and tell us why you are running for the Board of Education.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Welch. I lived in Annigo pretty much my whole life. I went to high school here. Moved away a couple of times, back to Arizona, back to Florida, but always ended up back here. I have two children in the school district. One graduated two years ago. And basically, I'm running for school board because there is no more transparency, and I think they need to be held accountable. And I think accountability just needs to be there, and the whole community needs to be more involved than just empty board meetings all the time. Thank you.
Hi, first of all, thank you all for being here tonight. I'd really like this opportunity for the community to get to know the candidates, and I appreciate your time coming. Mr. Boldig, thank you very much for your organization in this event. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised in Annigo, returned after graduating from college. My husband and I have three children. Our oldest is a senior this year, our youngest is in Kinnearton. And the reason I am running for the school board is simply because I care about our students, I care about our staff and our community. I hear often focusing on the issues, and I a lot of times say that language is important. For me, I'm not sure focusing on the issues is one thing, but seeking solutions and, most importantly, looking to unite our district and our community, to be a united front together, to focus on student achievement is most important to me. And I believe that our district can and will get there. And so, I'm running because I care about students and I care about the academic success of our students, and ensuring that they have the skills to be successful as young adults.
Hi, my name is Lee Rorick. I was raised in Annigo, graduated from Annigo High School. I am married to Danny Rorick, my husband. We are a blended family. I have a stepdaughter and two children of my own, six grandchildren. I am running because I wish for all children's voices to be heard, and children with disabilities or social issues and mental health issues and whatnot, I want them to be able to achieve the best education that they possibly can, and to have those resources available to those that need it, and to help them to achieve the goal of becoming well-rounded, educated, successful adults in society. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jenny Cresson, and I am not from the area. I am from Racine County, so I've only been up here about 12 years. My husband, Jason Cresson, we've been married for 14 years, this year will be 14 years, and we have two kids. So, I have two young kids in the school system. One's in third grade and one's in fifth grade. And what I'm seeing them getting, not getting taught, is a big reason as to why I'm running for the school board. So, I am noticing that they're not getting taught curricula anymore. They can't sign their name. I find that that is a big problem. I don't agree with them taking curricula out of the school system at all, not whatsoever. There's so many reasons why they need to be able to sign their name. I could go on and on forever, but I mean, the back of your driver's license is a big one, back of a credit card, debit card, writing a check, signing a contract. I mean, every single time I have to sign my name, I think, oh, here's another spot that my kids wouldn't be able to do if I didn't teach them myself, because they didn't get taught in school. So, that's a big problem that I don't agree with. They're not getting taught how to read a normal clock. They're only getting taught how to read a digital clock. That, I just feel that that is just unacceptable. Like, why are we taking away reading a clock? And then also, filling out a mailing address, like mailing out an envelope. They are not getting taught that anymore in school. My third grader and my fifth grader were never taught how to fill out an envelope to mail something. If I did not teach them, they would not know it, and I don't understand that. That is unacceptable again. Like, why are we taking that out? These are basic life skills that our kids should be taught, and I want to have a voice on the school board to tell, like, to suggest putting that back into the school system, because I don't think it should have been taken out in the first place. I'm also a business owner. I own a small business here in town, so I employ high school kids to close my shop up. And I'm also seeing in that side, as an employer, things that the high school kids are not ready for the workforce at all. They can't do, I don't want to say all, but more than one has come in not being able to do 5.5% sales tax. At 16, 17, 18, 19 years old, not being able to do 5.5% sales tax. That's a problem. That is a huge problem. Not being able to count money, that's a huge problem. By 16, 17 years old, you should be able to be ready for the workforce, but they're not. So, not only do you have to teach them how to do the job that you hired them for, you also have to teach them basic skills that they should have been taught in the school system, and they're not. So, that is also what played a big role in me running for the school board, is that I'm just seeing the lack of things that should be in the public school system, and they're not. But also, the sad thing is, is that it is in the private school system. So, if you can afford to send your kid to a private school, your kid will be way farther ahead, but if you can't afford that, then your kid's stuck in the public school system, and they're going to be far behind. No, I can't afford a private school system, so my kids are stuck in the public school system. So, I'm going to put my name out there and run for school board and try to fix it. That's what I'm going to do, so.
My name is Scott Peterson. 67 years old, I've spent 66 of those years in Annigo. My dad, Todd here. Mom was a nurse, and I just love this place. I gave this town a black mark about 12, 13 years ago. Been pardoned for that sin, and I just want to give back. I have no other reason for running. I just think, I do think I have some knowledge. Spent my entire life listening to the school district talk around the kitchen table. I think I'm the only guy in the history of this school who's held every position in the football program, from manager on up to head coach. We won't talk about my record as the head coach. Not many people can say that. So, like I said, I just want to help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, candidates, on that first one. Second question, and once again, we're going to do it the same order as last. To the candidates, what are your two biggest concerns for this district?
Sorry, I can't sit and talk. I have to stand and talk. The two biggest issues I see in this school district that aren't ever being taken care of, the biggest one is bullying. My daughter is 20 now. She was bullied. It always got swept under the rug, always. My son is in third grade. Elementary was a disaster for him. He's now in fourth grade in the middle school, doing a lot better. He has an amazing teacher, but elementary was just crap, like honestly. Like, he was constantly bullied. I talked to the principal, talked to the teachers, it just got swept under the rug. It finally got to the point where I had no other choice but to call the police and get in contact with the guardian of that upset child. And luckily, parents of parents, we took care of it together, and it stopped. But it shouldn't have to be, it shouldn't have to go that far. There are kids being bullied all the time, no matter, it depends like on their sexuality, on who their parents are, what their last name is. It's a constant day-to-day battle. I have quite a few friends who pulled their children out of school, this school district, and put them into online schooling, simply for bullying. The other problem that is really big in this school district is these teachers have no Their voices aren't heard, they get walked over, they get, they're just not appreciated the way they're supposed to. And we have lost so many teachers due to, pretty much, they're just like the lack of respect for the teachers. Like, why should these teachers go above and beyond for children when the administration doesn't do it for them? And I think that seriously needs to be changed. Thanks.
The two, I don't want to focus on the word concern, because again, we can identify problems, but we have to look for solutions. So, areas of improvement that I am excited for our district to achieve is increasing academic achievement, and I think we are in a good path in doing that. We are utilizing coaches within our district, which I was against coaches initially and remained in neutral for quite some time, because it didn't make sense of why you needed to hire coaches to teach teachers, but it's more than that. It's not that, actually. It is looking at our data strategically and intentionally, and implementing supports for each student, so that we aren't just focusing on growth, we're seeking proficiency. So, student achievement is an area that I'm excited to see our district continue to show not just growth, but getting kids to proficiency. Another area for improvement that I believe our district is working towards and has prioritized is ensuring that our students and staff feel safe and feel a part of their school community. So, I'm focused on assisting and being one member of helping to unify our buildings and our schools, our students, our staff, and our community, so that all of our staff and students feel a part of their school community and don't have to feel unsafe going to the bathroom, don't have their spouses coming home physically or verbally being attacked by students. We're better than that. We know that we're better than that, and we can get there. We're addressing that and recognizing that that is an area that we need to improve upon in having leadership with intentional approaches to reduce the negative behaviors that I believe will then also show growth and proficiency academically.
Okay, you have to forgive me. This is very, very new for me. One of my biggest concerns in this community is children who are, struggle with mental health and social disabilities and who need extra support, and the resources aren't available here. So, many have to go outside of the county to get some of those resources for them. And that's hard for some families to travel to Wausau, to other counties to get some of the help that their children need. We need a better support system for these children to become successful in society, and it's an issue. There's so many children that are dealing with so many different things in today's world, and they need to be able to go somewhere where they feel safe and comfortable to talk to somebody, to have that resource for them to get through whatever issue it is that they're struggling with. The other thing is, I see that we need to bring in some good quality teachers into the community, ones that will become part of the community and stay with the school districts, and to give our children a quality education that they need and to become academically I believe that there is room for improvement for both of those things. Thank you.
Hi, and the things that I think are very important to me, I'm fixing, like, that could use improvement, would be definitely our test scores. We're down, way down at the bottom in our state, and I think that we're better than that as a county, as a school district. I think we definitely should be better than at the bottom for our state. So, that is something that we definitely need to look into and look at fixing and trying to get our test scores way higher, which we're already on that path. Our gap in the math test scores is closing, so we are on the right path to closing in for math. Reading hasn't improved as much this year as we would have hoped, but we also got a new reading curriculum, so it's kind of to be expected when the teachers have to learn how to do the new curriculum as well. So, they had to learn how to teach it, and then the kids had to start learning it and improving their reading scores. So, that's kind of to be expected, and hopefully, maybe, you know, by the end of the year or next year, we'll definitely see growth in those reading test scores. But the math test scores are improving already this year quite dramatically. So, we're on the right page for math. So, that is one big thing of mine. When I saw where we landed, that was very concerning, but from what I'm hearing, we are on the right path, and let's just hopefully we can continue that growth. Then also, obviously, discipline is a big one. Some of the things I'm hearing that kids are doing to teachers is unacceptable, and we do have to come up with a much better plan of how we're going to handle that moving forward, because teachers shouldn't be getting slapped, spit in the face, you know, that if we're thrown at them on a daily basis, or told to shut up on a daily basis. Those things are very, very bad and need to be, we need a plan. We need a plan of how we're going to handle those students when those things occur, because teachers shouldn't be getting abused going to school to teach and do their job. That's unacceptable. I know that doesn't all land on the school, though, either. Some of that is parenting, so your hands are going to be tied to an extent. I mean, obviously, we need to come up with a plan of what we're going to do in the school system to fix it, but obviously, why is the child acting like that in the first place? That's not on the school. So, it is going to be, you know, a little bit there. It's not going to be all on the school board. But that is concerning. Like, some of the things my kids come home saying, that students threw a desk, jumped up on a table, jumped off a desk, like, just the things that are going on in the school is just unacceptable of how students are acting, and something does need to be done. So, those, I guess, would be my two things that would be my biggest concern, test scores and discipline. Kids can't do a good job on a test in front of them if there's a kid acting out next to them. So, and I think that they're going to go hand in hand. So, if you can somehow control the kids so they behave better, then all the kids can learn better, and then the teachers will be happier, too. So, those would be my things. Thank you.
I don't have the same concerns as these people do. Mine aren't real specific. I guess they are. But the number one concern I have is, is just 90% of things is perception, and right now, the perception of this school board, school, is not real positive, and I just want to somehow be a part of the process in making this place a better place. I'm not blaming anybody. I think there's a lot of things out of people's control. I would echo parenting. I don't remember as a kid, and I got in trouble, believe it or not, going home and telling my mom and dad I'm a teacher, and I think that happens at times now. My other concern is, I think we blame too many people in the past. If you want to blame school boards for past things, then you got to start with when we unified the school district. I just think that there's too many fingers being pointed right now and too much micromanaging going on by school boards in general. We hire a superintendent. They should be allowed to do their job. They're in charge of running the district. The board is supposed to make policy and protect policy. The soup's job is to hire highly qualified people. Not sure our district values that all the time. So, we need to give her room to do her job, hire some highly qualified people, and we may need to make sure that her goals reflect that of the community. That's where the school board needs to step in. If the superintendent's goals and the other administrators' goals don't reflect the goals of our community and the staff, the teaching staff, the janitorial staff, then they're being remiss in their job. I think disagreement is healthy. I don't think teachers should be calling the carpet for disagreeing, and disagreement is good, as long as it's done in a positive way. It's great for the climate, it's great for the culture. And I'm not sure we've always valued that in the past. I'm not speaking about anybody in particular, because I don't know these people that are in charge right now very well. I'm just, I just know that I've been here for 66 years, and I know what the perception has been over that period of time. So, I guess, I just want to help, like I said before. And to end this, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to my wife for letting me run for school board. Thanks, Joanie.
All right. Thank you, candidates. Now, just to make sure that, I maybe didn't emphasize this earlier, the candidates did not see any of these questions prior to this evening. This was all very spontaneous, so their answers are from the heart. It's nothing that's pre-formatted or anything else. But that being said, third question. And after I ask this third question, they will all have a chance to respond, and then we're going to open it up to the audience. But here's the format, once again. You will have the opportunity to walk up to the tables to talk to the individual candidates. We're not going to be passing a microphone around the room or anything of that nature. You have a chance to go one-on-one with the individual candidates to get to understand where they're coming from, to talk to them individually. We're going to run that, I think, for about an hour or so. Kind of like to wrap everything up around 7:30, but if we go a little bit over, that's fine, but that's the game plan. Question number three. With the understanding that historically this area has not been receptive to operating or building referendums, what would be your approach to getting the public to support a referendum if the board decided that it would be necessary to run one? Jennifer, you're first. Okay, here's the question. With the understanding that historically this area has not been receptive to operating or building referendums, what would be your approach to getting the public to support a referendum if the board decided that it would be necessary to run one? Everybody clear on the question? Jennifer?
The only thing I can say is my grandparents went east, west, and north. I mean, seriously. We need to just, we need, our kids need a new elementary school, bigger rooms, bigger classrooms, up-to-date stuff, not this. I mean, the teachers do great decorating their rooms and that kind of stuff, but when you are putting 18 kids in a room or more per teacher, those rooms are so small. And honestly, I have no other thing to say to that, other than if you can't tell, like, your grandparents, my grandparents, went to these schools. They need to be shut down. We need to stop spending money on them, and we need to build. Lot of money.
So, our community has historically struggled to pass a referendum, and I resonate significantly with what Scott said. It's all about perception, and we've had this lingering barrier within our community that there's a lack of trust from the board, no matter who it is, and the community, and we have to repair that, and I think we're making steps to do that. Our current administration is doing, meeting, doing the breakfast club the morning after Board of Education meetings. That's a way to increase communication, to build trust. Now, I know that's not directly related to a referendum, but it is important, because there's follow-up, following board meeting from the superintendent and the board president. We can't focus on the negativity and the deficits in the past regarding referendums. We have to be very open and clear about our why. We have a facilities task force right now that's driving the recommendations that are coming to the board. So, I support the facilities task force and their recommendations and the why, and assessment of our facilities and recommendations that will come from that, on what our buildings are capable are capable of in terms of staffing, sizing, things like that. I was a big supporter of the last referendum and was really disappointed when it did not pass. Since then, I've shifted my perspective and I do feel that, I do believe that there's a lot of value in having the smaller schools in our community. With that being said, historically, we haven't prepared to maintain those buildings. So unfortunately, if we were to need to go to referendum, I, I would be in support of a new build because we didn't set ourselves up to be able to maintain our current buildings. That being said, in order to pass a referendum, we can't ask our community to support a build without having a plan on how we're going to maintain it. And the, the board and the district is utilizing Fund 46, capital improvement fund, to be able to have a strategic, you know, a financial plan to maintain the buildings. So I know I'm kind of rambling, but I feel like there's so many interconnected parts to this. It's not just a referendum, it's what are we doing? A strategic plan would also help drive all of that because our community would be aware of our decision-making and our whys because everything that would come to the board would be based on what's in our strategic plans so the community would know and how it ties to a plan, why it's being asked. And again, that, that's all about the communication and trust building so that the community can feel confident in a request should that come for referendum.
I agree with what Jennifer says. I believe that it is time to move forward. New facility, building, new technology, new classrooms, bigger, better, brighter to help with our children's education and the future in today's world. As she said, my grandparents and my, we went, you know, we've schooled these schools for many, many years. They're, they're falling behind on how they can keep up with the, the maintenance on these schools and we just really need to look to, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous, you have to forgive me.
You're doing fine.
I believe that it's, it's time to move forward and to, to, to build a better school for our children. Thank you.
I agree that we do need to do a referendum. We do need a new building. I'm not from around here, so I don't have grandparents that went to these schools or anything like that. But what I can say is when I walk into North where my kids went, well, one still goes there, it's like a deja vu of my childhood elementary school that I went to. Like all the same tile bathroom looks identical to the bathroom at my elementary school from like the eighties and nineties. So it's, it screams that it needs a lot of improvement and a lot of updates. And anybody that does any kind of construction knows how expensive all that is. Like we're remodeling our house. Everything costs a fortune. So I can't even imagine what it would cost to try to get those three elementary schools up to par in order to like just be able to teach the kids decent and them get the proper education that all the other kids get that go to like more updated schools. It would cost probably more money to get those schools and those buildings up to par than it would just to build a new school. So if I was talking to somebody and trying to encourage them to see that we need a new building, that, those are some points of view that I would put out there. It's like, how much would it cost to get those schools up to date versus how much would it cost just to have a new building? I mean, how much money are we wasting on heat to heat those buildings in the winter? You know, I'm sure we're just throwing a punch of money out the window because I'm sure those windows are not up to date. I'm sure there's drafts galore in those old buildings. So I just think that if anyone that does any kind of construction in their home has to see the price value, like in updating a building versus just putting up a new building at this point, when you're talking three old buildings. The other thing is, is I do think that it'd be more appealing to bring in teachers in a new building. I'm sure when teachers are graduating schools and looking to get a job, if they have multiple job options, they have, if they can go to a newer building or get this job at North, which one's more appealing, you know, if they're both paying about the same? So if money wasn't a factor, the paycheck wasn't a factor, which one's going to be more appealing to them? Probably the newer building with the updated electronics and everything else that you could possibly ask for in a nice brand new building. So that is the other thing that I'm thinking of and just imagining those teachers having to work in these old drafty buildings and these old bathrooms that the stalls don't even shut and the bathroom sinks half of them don't work. I'm sure they would much rather be in a newer building as well. So those are some other things to think about as well as the money factor. So those are some things that I think about when I think about a new school being put up. And I was in favor of the referendum when it was, it was on the ballot when I first moved up here and I went through this down where I came from and it didn't pass right away. And eventually it did have to pass because eventually they had to get trailers outside of the school to put kids in like dead choir and band in trailers outside because they ran out of room. So eventually they ended up having to add on eventually anyway. So we're kind of in the same boat that I was in when I was down in Racine County is it did pass and now it's going to be on the ballot again. So we really just need to really make sure people understand what's on the line, like our, you know, and it's going to be much better for our kids and our school and our teachers and everybody, so.
Jennifer, I went to West. I was an original student. So I resemble that remark. I think everybody wishes we could go back to the old days. When we had all those country schools, well, even before that. Jill, I think it was your great grandma, according to Beth Wagner, Beth Maddick Wagner. She always told the story that when they went from those one-room schools to build Spring Valley, Pleasant View, a lot of people out in, in her area were against it. She wrote a letter explaining why she thought it would be better to build those other schools. She talked about science, stuff like that. And the town now has made a decision to close those schools. To me, I love those places. And as a coach, I think Mr. Buckney will echo this, when those kids came from Spring Valley, Pleasant View, we had eight quarterbacks coming to the, coming out for foot, freshman football. They all thought they were going to play for the Packers. But we can't go back to that. That's over. I just think it's time to move forward like these people have said. Give our kids a new science lab. A theater in the middle, in the grade school would be awesome, stuff like that. Let them act. There's way more to school than sports and academics. You got band, you got choir, you have forensics. Those kids need a spot. And I don't think we offer that, those spots in our schools right now, especially to the young people. Invest in our community. Why not? You got help wanted signs all over the place. We need to attract some young people. According to the last census, if I'm not, if I remember right, 59% of the people in Langley County were over 59 years old. We need to get some young people in here. You look what happened to our, what's happened to our school population in the last 10 years. We've gone from a Division II team to a Division IV probably in the near future. We need to attract some young people. So I think it's time. I think it's time to invest in the community and I commend the district for what they're doing with the task forces. I think that's a good, good way to start being transparent. Let's just keep being transparent. Thank you.
All righty. Well, that concludes this portion of the meet and greet. And now it's on all of you. As I said earlier, the candidates are going to be seated at these tables. It's your opportunity to go one-on-one with them, come up, ask them a question and get that direct contact, get to know the candidates. The only thing I'm going to ask of the entire group here, be professional, be cordial. This is not a debate. This is nearly a question and answer time for you to get to meet the candidates for the Board of Education and spend a couple minutes with them to get to know them a bit and know where they stand on the issues. So thank you all for attending. We're not taking any questions from the audience. That was going to come up next. I may be getting old and I just retired last year, but I think I still got a couple of folks up here that are still working, some of the parts okay. But please take the time to come up, speak with the candidates, ask them questions. This is your chance to get to know them. And we thank you all for being here. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Eventually there's going to be some orders or some snacks over there on the table once Brian gets them out. They're there? Then why am I even bringing them up? But everybody have a good time. Thank you for being here. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Hi, I'm Mike Boldig. Recently on this last Wednesday night, we held a meet and greet, the school board candidate session in North Star Lanes. And all six candidates were around unfortunately. Danny Pyatt was unable to make it for that particular evening. He had a prior commitment out of the area. So it was felt that giving Danny an opportunity to answer the same three questions that were asked of the five candidates that were at the meeting were originally there. So we're taking this opportunity to give Danny a chance to answer some questions and give his opinion on some things. So Danny is seated over here to my right. So Danny, thank you for making yourself available today. First question that we ask of everyone. Please introduce yourself. Tell us a bit about yourself and why you are running for the Board of Education.
Okay, first before I answer that question, I just want to say thank you to Mike Boldig and Glenn Buckney for putting this event on at North Star. Thank you for allowing me to be able to come tonight and be able to answer all these questions that was asked to everybody this past Wednesday night. I heard that was a great success. I heard there was a great turnout, which I'm very thankful for and proud of for our community because most of the time as Mike is a long-term board member for the school district, anything that pertains to the school is usually very well attended from the community. So I, I just thank all the people for coming. All the candidates that are running, thank you for all of your time and effort and energy that you have put into running the campaign up to April the 2nd. So to answer Mike's question, who am I? I'm Danny Pyatt. I have lived in Anago now for 15 years, working on 16 years. We have purchased our first ever home here. We no longer live in church parsonages. We live in our own home. Our two kids, my daughter graduated in 2018 from the Anago School District and my son just graduated last year, 22, I'm sorry, 23, from the Anago School District. Daughter is graduating from Drew University in a couple of weeks in May, completing her degree of music therapy. She would have went to a school here in Wisconsin, had there been a school that had that available, that program available, but she's there nonetheless. Nathaniel, my son, he is going to UW Whitewater and loves being there. It's a great music school and that's what he's doing is music education. So my son went through the entire K through 12 program here in Anago. My daughter started here in the middle of third grade and finished all the way through 12th grade here in Anago. Why am I running for the board, continuing to run for the board? In 2016, I began to really have an interest in the board and prior to 2016, I was attending a lot of the board meetings, a lot of the committee meetings. Mike Boldig then was the president of the board and he and I had a lot of conversations about the board and I don't know, I, I don't want to put him on the spot to say that he pushed me over the edge, but you know, I talked to him and his words to me, if I remember right, Mike, you said, if it's something that you want to pursue, then you should, you should pursue it. So in 2017, I ran for the board and won the election in 2017 and I've been here ever since. Been through some district superintendents, some faculty and so I, I want to continue the upward momentum that I feel like that our school district is on. I'm not, I haven't reached the 12 years that Mike has been on the board, but I'm, I'm looking for another term on the board. I would really like to see the support of the community. If you voted for me in the past, I would like to see that vote to continue to keep me right there on the board.
Good. Thank you, Danny. Second question that we ask of all the other candidates as well. What are your two biggest concerns for the district?
My two chief concerns of the district is number one, student achievement. It goes without saying that that should be everybody's concern, but I can't speak for everybody. This is just my concern. Whenever I came onto the board, our district was, was struggling somewhat in student achievement and we are still struggling somewhat in student achievement. However, I believe that if we get the right people in the right places, doing the right thing for the, for the cause of education, we could see student achievement continuing upward momentum. I was elated this year whenever the report card, which is the, this is, mind you, this is only one data point of, of numbers that you can look at, but this one data point is, is the data point that everybody sees throughout the entire state. And that's why it seems like everybody focuses on this state report card. There are so many other data points that happens within our district that I don't want to go too far down in those weeds, but this one state report card has seen ups and downs for the Anago School District. And I was elated this year whenever that report card came out to see that we actually increased. We, we came up from where we were the year before in that state report card, which shows there is some good work that's, that's being done from our staff. And I give credit to our teachers because our teachers is what's making this happen. They're the ones that's in the proverbial trenches daily with all the students that are seeing the progress and the terrific gains. They may not see it on the day-to-day basis, but as a, as a whole, you can see the gains that are being made throughout the district. And I think we can continue that upward momentum going forward in the future as well. So student achievement is my number one goal to, to, to see our students achieve. And I would say my, I would have two that would kind of go right together and I'm going to put them both together without saying number two and number three. Number two, I would say is my concern is staffing as well as the financial structure of, of the district because we have staff that have recent, that have left our district recently, in recent years. And a lot of times what we hear on the board, one of the major factors as to why staff leave is because of funding, of not being able to pay our staff what other districts that are surrounding us are able to pay. So that's why I say staff and funding go hand in hand. So it, it's important that if we're going to continue that upward momentum in student achievement, my number one goal is that we have the best staff possible that we can get here and also to keep that staff and what we have to do to retain that staff. Because the day of driving a half an hour, 45 minutes to another school to teach is here and, and teachers can do that and staff members, even support staff can do that, possibly for a few extra dollars and everybody needs a few extra dollars. So staffing and the funding is also very important, vitally important in us, in, in what I believe.
Thanks. The third and final question that we ask of everyone. With the understanding that historically this area has not, not been receptive to operating or building referendums, what would be your approach to getting the public to support a referendum if the board decided that it would be necessary to run one?
So Mike, that's a great question because we're going to have to run something in the very near future. Since my tenure on the board in 2017, being there with Mike on the board and then with one of our outgoing board members. one of our outgoing board members, former president Andy Mary, this is something that Mike and Andy, more Andy than Mike, was always passionate in talking about operational referendum. So we don't like to say that our word in our community, because it doesn't have a very positive connotation to it, right? So if we're going to gain support for either an operational or a capital referendum, I really believe what we have to do is, is, is the track that we're taking right now with the current board, is we've had a task force that has met, that task force has given the recommendation as to what we need to do going forward. Now, the second, which what I personally have called Task Force 2.0, is being formed, and by the way, let me just add, if you want to be a part of it, contact the district and, and you can be a part of it, anybody can be a part of Task Force 2.0 that would like to see, to have a voice in where the district is going in the future. So this task force is being tasked with, meeting with architect engineers, and we're right in the middle, I can't say in the middle, in the beginning, of a facilities analysis. Mike knows exactly what those facility analysis is all about. Glenn, you know from history what those are about. You went through the last one, I believe in 2014, was it? Somewhere in there, with CISA 10, came in and did a facility analysis of all of our buildings. That's where we are now with the group that we have hired to do this, the Blue Design Group. So part of this structure, Mike, is going to be, part of the next few phases of this is somewhere in here, there's going to be a survey that's going to go out to all the residents of the Anago School District. If you're within that Anago Unified School District, you're going to receive this survey coming out. I can't say when, because I'm not sure of the timeline for that, but in this survey, there will be questions in there that will dictate to the board which way that we need to go, operation referendum, capital improvement referendum. And through those two, that, that survey that goes out, you know, if elected to continue to serve on the board, you have my word that I'm going to follow what the people, what their wishes are. And the thing that I learned just recently, as I was in January at the state convention, always miss Mike being there, because he was fun to go with through the convention. We'll leave what happens to the convention at the convention, right, Mike? There's some things that, we'll just leave that alone. But anyhow, let's talk after we're off camera. But at the convention, I was privileged to sit inside a school perception, which is a survey group, and learn about school surveys that go out. And school perception is, could be a group of firm that we use, we don't know what we're going to use or how this survey is going to come out, but what I learned was in, in that is if the board does not follow the wishes of the community for either referendum of operation or capital, you're already setting yourself up for failure. So as a board member, we need to follow what the, what the survey teaches us and tells us from the community's standpoint. Point, I will say that the last referendums that we have had for capital improvement, personally, I have voted in favor of, because I really feel like that we need to do something better for our students, and I've been, and I was saddened, the last referendum that lost just by a few short votes. Don't know what the future's going to hold, but I believe that we are at the right time at the right place, and if we can get all of our community on board to support, we can see either the operational or capital referendum. Personally, this is my personal opinion, I really believe that we are beyond the point of the operational referendum. I believe we're more closely aligned with a capital improvement referendum because of the conditions of our buildings. And, and I know that there's been, since we're on capital improvement, I brought with me, because I know that there's been lots of talks about the, the mill rate this year, and I'll give one to you, Mike, and you can have this one, because I've given these all over town, because people need to understand, this came right straight from our business office, all these numbers came from the business office, and also from Wisconsin DPI, Department of Public Instruction. And whenever you look at this, the reason why that our taxes have gone up over, from last year to this year, and by the way, this is the second time that we've seen the lowest mill rate in 13 years, and I think that's very good for our district, to, to have the second lowest mill rate. To be debt-free is huge. Our auditors, whenever they came in, they said this is the only district that they audit that has a district that is completely debt-free. So thanks to the board and the administration, who has worked really hard and diligently to make this a debt-free district, is awesome. But when I look at what we have, where we have put money in and the additional costs, the one thing I want to point out that's not on these papers is that we are a low-spending district. And Mike, you understand, and Glenn, both of you understand completely what that low-spending district means, and that is back in the 1990s, somewhere in the mid 90s, our state legislature passed this revenue cap limit for districts, and at that time, we were very physically responsible as a district. We didn't spend a whole lot of money. Therefore, we was at the very bottom of what we can receive for student aid, which was $10,000 per student, right? The bottom part. Well, fortunately, our legislature this past year has raised that, that bottom number from 10,000 to 11,000. So they have given us the ability to go to the taxpayers and, and go and ask the taxpayers for that additional $1,000 per student. So my question is to all of us, there's three reasons why that you see that increase. Number one, the tax, the, the low-spending, I might take it too much time, I hope not, the low-spending district, because our district is very physically responsible in the dollars in the senses, in the sense that we get. So that's one reason why, because it's gone up to the $1,000 more, $11,000 per student. A second reason why is some of our properties around our district has been reassessed this year, and because of the reassessment, the property values have gone up. That's, that's beyond the school district's control, that's not under our control. And then the third thing is, is the reason why that we have seen an increase in our mill rate, is due to the fact that we have put monies in Fund 46 as opposed, or, I'm sorry, Fund 10, which is the general fund, as opposed to putting those in the capital improvement fund to Fund 46. So I think we need to do a little bit better as a district to make sure that by the end of July the 30th, because June 30th is when the fiscal year of the school ends, but we have until July 30th, or, I'm sorry, July 31st, to take and put even more money into Fund 46, and then we are aided on that money the next year. Rather than having a negative deficit against the money that goes into Fund 10, we put it in Fund 46, we also get aided on that, which means more money in Fund 46, and we also receive a percentage, just like a bank account, a savings account, you receive a percent for increase on that money that's in Fund 46. So it, it stands to reason, whenever we see, for example, last year, at the end of the school year, when we had $343 that was added to Fund 10, it, it would have been much better for us to put that $343,000 over into capital improvement, into Fund 46. And what is that? That actually helps us to be able to do the upkeep on our, on our high school building and our middle school building, in order, instead of having deferred maintenance to go down the road, this gives Jake and his team with our buildings and grounds the opportunity to have a fund that they can pull money from for large projects, like what we're doing this summer with the middle school window project. A great portion of that money is coming from Fund 46 that we have started several years ago, and now we can pull money from that Fund 46. You know, the, the financial system of the, of the school district, when I first came onto the board, this was probably a question that I bugged Mike with more than anything else, is to explain the financial structure of the board. I, I think that's what I bugged you the most with. And, and Mike would tell me, go to the convention, attend every session about finances. I went the first year to the convention in 2018, attended every session about finances and left more confused than I understood. However, now after being on the board just a little bit longer, I'm not quite as confused as 2018, but it's great, because I have a, a basic understanding of how the financial structure of the school district works, of all public school systems work, because it's not an easy task to understand how all that works. It's, it's pretty difficult, but I'm learning that as, as I'm going. And I, I'm pretty sure that it took a little time for Mike and everybody else who's on the board to learn that financial structure. I'm not as gifted as Dr. Bardo to be able to know all of the, the wisdom, because he served as a finance director by being the superintendent of the school district, so he knows the ins and outs of the financial structure of the school. So that's why I'm, I'm really thankful that we have him on the board to help us through this as well.
Good. Well, that was all the questions that we asked of everybody else. Danny, thank you for making yourself available this afternoon. To those of you who are going to be viewing this at later date, I want to, once again, thank the other candidates who were there on Wednesday evening, it was a, a good turnout. My recommendation to all of you is very simple, take time to study the issues, study the candidates, and by all means, show up at the polls on April 2nd and vote as you see fit. Thank you.
Just one more time, I want to say thank you for allowing me to be able to come in, Mike, and ask these, answer these questions from you, and from those that were there. And my apologies that my wife and I both were out of town for this convention that we went to, but my mind was here Wednesday night for all of the candidates, and if, if there was a way, maybe next time, if somebody is out, we could livestream somebody in, that could be a potential that we can do with all this modern media, and now that we know that Glenn is a media guru, you can, you can make this happen. So thank you so much, I appreciate it, and I appreciate your vote on April the 2nd.